I'd like to call our meeting to order tonight. Thank you all for attending. Would you please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our addition, our agenda will be our weekly commission reports, and I usually start with Commissioner Moore.
Okay.
So let's go there.
All right. The only thing I have on my calendar this week is several days I have meetings with the rail consultants and the friends of the Shelton Railroad. We are working together to come up with a proposal for funding and a proposal for an agreement with Simpson to acquire the roundhouse and the rails. We are hopeful that we can somehow keep the rails available for outside the city as well so that we have the potential for great mobility into the future for the county. And so we're working on different aspects and different methods of doing that and hopeful that we can acquire the funding to continue on. I'll be doing a presentation at an infrastructure funding conference later this month, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Commissioner Ardell?
Tomorrow morning, bright and early, I have my left board meeting, and that stands for law enforcement officers, firefighters, we manage their pension fund, the retired ones. Anyway, that's tomorrow morning. Also, I will be on Wednesday, meeting with county and city officials to discuss the triage center for the Shelton-Mason County area. So we'll be discussing that. And then I'll be at Choice High School someday, some, one of these days this week, I'll be there. And then Friday, I'm heading out of Dodge for the weekend, so won't be around.
Thank you very much. And this week, I will be attending my yearly tourism board meeting with Vicki Look and the other two board members, or four board members, that whoever shows up, and that's where we talk about distributing tourism dollars. And so I'll be doing that on Thursday, and that concludes our weekly commission reports. Next is a general public comment period. If anyone would like to say something, this is your opportunity here. And has anybody signed up to speak tonight?
We have no one on the floor.
Okay. All right. Moving right along, what I'd like to do is ask if we are ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Could we please have a read in that consent agenda?
Consent agenda, vouchers numbered 12649 through 12733, in the amount of $388,416.8. Commission meeting minutes from business meeting of September 6th, 2016, study session of September 12th, 2016, business meeting of September 19th, 2016, study session of September 26th, 2016. Ordinance number 1886-0916, second reading. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapters 13.04, 14.08, and 15.28 of the Shelton Municipal Code and the corresponding portions of ordinance number 1881-0116 relating to the two utility code, I'm sorry, relating to utility rates, connections, and charges.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The agenda passes. There's an op, an option. I'm reading option, but there's a, an item. There's an item that we're going to discuss under old business tonight, and so we'd like to turn this over to our Public Works Director, Gray Clark, to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I passed out a brief overview here of kind of the summary of what we've talked about over several business meetings regarding our water system up in Upper Mountain View. The question before the commission early on was the status of Well 1. As you know, we were concerned about its operation, and so we went through a lot of things at staff level to determine how well was functioning. We determined that its drawdown curve, and in fact, in your packet, in that, the very last, well, I guess it's done. Before you consider the drawdown curve that happened when the pump gets on, and within 10 minutes, it draws the head above the pump down to the well on Hall Field. And that's concerning because we don't want competition to happen. We don't want that pump to burn out. So what staff did is we installed a monitor type of system that allows us to monitor that. That level drops down to around nine feet, we shut the pump off. Now, allow it to recover. It recovers fairly fast, but it doesn't recover all the way. And so if it cycles things, it can turn on multiple times, it basically gets to a point of concern. So we also moved pump 1, well 1, out of first position, first call for water, we moved it into third position. So well 3 and well 4 are the first two calls for water, and they actually come on about the same time, as I understand it. And those actually, for the summer duration now, have been able to keep up with the demand. Thank goodness, we didn't have a real hot summer, so to speak, where a lot of watering would have gone on, but they appear to do just fine and have been working good. So we're excited about the fall coming now. We're going to be able to do the first phase of the restoration of that well. As you know, you decided to move away from drilling a new well 5 and to recondition well 1, so staff will be putting out the paperwork to get a contractor on board to facilitate that cleaning and restoration work, which the commission approved on, I believe it was August 1st, $195,000 to accomplish that work. $30,000 or thereabouts was to, for the pump costs, another $20,000 to remove the existing pump house structure or modify the roof so we can get in and out of there easier. Roughly $120,000 of that was to rehabilitate the well itself, which is, we have to pull the pump, clean the well thoroughly, and then put a new pump in the, in the well, and hopefully it will work great. Every indication is from Arcadia, who helped us evaluate this, they thought it was very reconditionable, so that, that is moving forward. Tonight before you is the last piece of the puzzle, which is kind of carried forward since that August 1st meeting, and that is, to get a second source in that Upper Mountain View zone, we would need to extend a pressure line from the existing well 1 to well 3's location, where it can be tied into the Upper Mountain View water main system. In your packet, you'll see a map of that. You can see where well 1 is, down off of Spring Road, just off of 13th there, and it, it's, the red line is that $400,000 pressure line that we would need to extend to connect it into this existing water main that we built in 2013 that takes the water all the way out to the new tank out on Dayton Airport Road. So that is kind of the overview of what we need to have the commission entertain tonight, is whether or not you want to move forward with that. Given the fact that we at this point in time don't have any active customers on that particular line, it's not as urgent or as compelling to put in this pressure line. It certainly can be doing, done at any time, but given in the spirit of having to take loan money to do it, staff's recommendations at this time would probably be not to install it and to allow us to get well 1 reconditioned. And should it be needed in the future, if we get more candidates out there, more Class A systems to come online, and State Patrol and others, then there's certainly, redundancy is always good. I did put a pros and cons list in the packet for you, and like I say, the pros, primarily that second source, runtime exercising, giving one pump a rest, pump 3 that currently pressurizes that upper zone and fills the tank, would have an alternate, but I think at this point in time, our recommendations, like I say, would probably be to delay the installation of this pressure line and to close out Phase 1 of the project. So with that, I'm open to answer any questions the commission might have.
Any questions for Mr. Clark?
I, has the pressure system been designed? I can't, I'm not clear on that. Do we have a design already for that?
For this pressure line?
Uh huh.
It's merely a extension of a main, a pressure line, from well 1, where we would put, like I say, a new, a new pump down in the well. We're going to lower it probably about 42 feet, but.
If we just pump all the way out to where it would connect into the Upper Mountain View zone. So it hasn't been designed, but it's a pretty straightforward design. The real important actions is just merely laying a pressure line of the right type of pipe, and that's it.
So at the time that we, that State Patrol connects, or some of the other customers connect, what timeframe would we be looking at if we decide not to go with this now?
Kind of mentioned you could pull a trigger on having us start to install.
All this, I think this is actually a line that our crew could actually install. It's, I'd say about $400,000 worth of cost to dig, dig the trench, labor equipment, materials to.
But Washington State Patrol, they come on board, they listing line and.
Tank where it is now.
Serve them this line as just the redundancy of a second source. So if something should happen to well 3, brand new, or shouldn't, do we just have another well drop, well 1, with this connection?
And have the, we're in the process, I understand, of contacting some of these other potential users to see if we can, to see what timeframe we would be looking at for them to come online if they are in fact planning to do that.
Exactly. Now that we have water out there, we want to go out and make contact with each of these Class A systems. The health department would very much like them to hook all water, and we're just having an emergency well. So they want us to help them.
Facilitate getting these offline. We have not started that contact process. We do have a list. I've been in contact with Regina down at Department of Health, and our plan is to gather a meeting, or maybe evening session, something where people can come in during different slots, and we could talk to them. Either that, or we'll just go out and meet with them onsite at their place and, and move forward in that direction. But we have not started that at this point.
I, I have had conversations with Department of Health, and I understand that they do have grants available for helping private systems hook up to our main system. And as well, I believe that Debbie Riley at the county has expressed some interest in working along the process to help these other wells become connected to city water. So, okay, that, that was all my questions.
So it's $400,000 to run the pressure line from well 1 up, right?
Yes.
Okay. So where's the tank of water that runs up well 1 right now?
Well 1 currently discharge is into the ground line, which is from well 1 down to the spring house, at which point it's then pumped into the non-need zone.
So what happens when you run that new line up from well 1 up the hill?
It, it would no, well 1 would.
Is there an issue with pressure that runs from well 1 down to the spring house? Are there going to be pressure problems there?
I'd say that's a gravity line that runs.
Okay, so there won't be a new, there won't be a new line that runs from the well 1 down?
Understanding we would utilize the existing line if, if we don't move forward with this one.
Okay. There's not enough, there won't be too much pressure over with a new line running up the hill?
We would probably size the pump to replace the in-kind pump that's in there now. I, we, we want to lower it a little bit, about 42 feet, from what I understand, talking to Arcadia, just to get more water above where that pump sits during the rest. So the drawdown curves won't get close to the pump, and we don't have to worry about it pumping, burning out. But it would require a different pump to pump up to Upper Mountain View zone than to pump to where it currently goes to the spring house.
And there wouldn't be another cost of running a pressurized line down from the new well to the spring house?
It's my understanding, the actual line that goes to the spring house is a gravity line? Am I correct? That's correct. So it's a gravity line that goes from well 1 down to the spring house right now, and then at the spring house, it is boosted and pumped up into the Upper Mountain View. So I, I don't believe there's any additional cost or work that would need to be done to, to facilitate reconditioning well 1. It, it will function with the piping system that is there, we just need to replace the pump and clean the casing.
Well, I have never probably been in favor of at this point in time paying the $400,000 for another line. And so I don't want to be redundant, that's where, do you use redundancy? So I don't want to be redundant in saying that I could easily support rebuilding this well to the tune of the $200-plus thousand, but the $400,000 line, I think we need to wait a little bit more until we see if we can get some customers to hook up to our systems. So I would support the staff's recommendation to put the $400,000 line on hold at this time.
Okay.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. That's what we'll do.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right. Now, on to new business, we're going to have a little budget overview presented to us by our city administrator, Ryan Wheaton, and our financial director of financial services, Cinnamon Brown. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Wheaton at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to let Cinnamon step up to the podium, and she is going to run us through what our overview of the estimates for 2017.
So we came up with copies of this earlier, if you didn't get one, and you want one? Let me hand it out.
I don't think I have.
We, we didn't get copies.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
So we'll look at two budgets. The first one will be.
It's the Shelton Metropolitan Park budget. They have a general fund for them. At this point in the budget, this is kind of a pre-preliminary, so this is department estimates, there's no fund.
We can start from here. We can begin. Budget. The purpose of this presentation is to compare the preliminary costs for available resources. Like I said, there's no fund balances in here, these are department estimates, and the department wish lists, if you can think of it outright. We'll look into your feedback from the commission, and this sets the stage for. Is that jumping on? We'll go through each of the funds in the budget, starting with the general fund. Each of the funds will talk about the requested expenditures, projected revenues, if there's an overage or a shortfall, and then we'll look at some of the requests.
Ongoing one-time requests, capital requests, and my fall into each fund. So for the general fund, we've requested expenditures of $686,288. Projected revenues coming at $10,978,311, with a shortfall projected at $707,897. This includes a $135,744 transfer to the debt fund and a $145,364 transfer of property General fund requests, this is, this section is the increase to ongoing projects. There's three pages. It's small text. We probably won't read through all of them, but you can kind of take a glance of them up there. They're listed by function, judicial and detention, finance, facilities, data processing. This can be additional staff, increased projects that are already going on, home monitoring, training, new hardware, code enforcement and police, dump fees, looks like more staff, communications, and streets planning and the community center. The additions there. For a total ongoing money request of $312,457. The capital and one-time requests include Tyler and Code Consulting Services, which are our accounting software, vehicles, equipment, supplies for various projects that departments want to be going. For $193,141, that brings the total new requests for the general fund to $505,598. And if you look back at the $707,000 shortfall, you can see where a lot of that comes in. So again, we look at this like this is the department's wish list, this is what they want to, budget was unlimited. From here, we start panning down what we can actually afford. For the fund next, requested expenditures, $40,800. Projected revenues, $50,540, with an overage of $9,740. The capital improvement fund, requested expenditures, $1,708,829. Projected revenues, $1,708,700. Looking right now at a shortfall of $3,022. This.
The requests include various overlay projects, sidewalk replacement.
The roundabout downtown visioning project. Total new requests, $133,800.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
At this point, so the transportation benefit district that we did, where does that show up in here? Do we have some incomes coming in?
That will.
For strip repair? Probably someplace farther back in the.
Yeah, it's one of the later funds. Oh, that's going to show up in the, that's going to show up on the next page.
It will, that's fine. Okay, I, I just.
Water fund. The water fund, requested expenditures, $10,252,591. Revenues, $10,163,058. Right now, the shortfall of $89,533. Here are the water fund requests, water tank diving, repair, equipment, upgrades, and HEG interchange. You can see the interchange is 100% funded by Hall Equities and the TIB Transportation Total new requests, $4,088,980. The sewer fund, requested expenditures, $13,319,069. Projected revenues, $12,835,144. Right now, the shortfall of $484,225. Their requests, county landfill fees, vehicles, maintenance workers, various supplies, and the GIS sewer system mapping. Their total is $622,131. Solid waste fund, requested expenditures, $2,115,582. Projected revenues, $1,679,000, with a shortfall of $436,582. Their various requests, new tablets, legal fees, enclosure fees for the C Street landfill, supplies, truck. Their total new requests, $553,496. Storm drainage, requested expenditures, $727,123. Projected revenues, $758,952, with an overage of $31,829. Their request is the Laurel Street storm extension for $33,000. The last fund on here, the Equipment Maintenance and Rental Fund, EMMR. Requested expenditures, $1,084,251. Projected revenues, $787,371, with an overage of $296,880. Their requests, staff, equipment, software. Total new requests, $514,792. So again, looking at that, that's the departmental wish list, that's where we're going to start from. From there, we're going to start pairing it down. What can we afford to fund? Where are we going to go with the budget? Budget calendar's up here. October 31st, preliminary budget presentation, so that'll be the next version of the budget. November 3rd, the preliminary budget public hearing and the revenue sources public hearing. December 5th, your final budget public hearing, so that's when you're going to get close to what your actual budget is. And by December 31st, we have to have the 2017 budget adoption.
I guess, oh, I'm sorry. I guess I never did see where you, the transportation benefit money comes into this, is there a note someplace on here?
No, I didn't put it in. No, I'll probably have to go back and look it up and go back to you.
That was my, that was my question as well, is it's a new funding source which will allow us to do more paving and street improvements. So that, that was my question too, as far as what were we anticipating through that? So, thank you.
We'll have a follow-up before the 31st historic, we haven't broken down the road yet, but we'll be ready.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Cinnamon.
Thank you very much. This is the first step.
Yep.
Now go find the money, please. All right. All right. At this time, what I'm going to do is turn this over to, again, Ryan Wheaton, our city administrator, and he's going to talk to us about some public works, water utility update.
Gray Clark's going to come present, and before that, I'll give you one quick report. We had an offer that we accepted on the 21/25 Washington House.
Folks, it's money coming in. We, this is time when we clap. Thank you.
We're going to move through that process where we're going to build it up, and the good news is, it was like the folks that are purchasing it are holding to build it on the.
That feels very good.
Commissioners, we wanted to give you an update tonight on kind of two major construction projects. Okay, commissioners, we wanted to give you an update tonight on kind of two major construction projects that are pretty much finishing up, the Angle Side Booster Pump Station identified early on. I'm gonna try and give you, Ryan kinda gave me a punch list here of the things he wanted me to cover, so I'm just gonna go down those and answer those questions as best I can, and give you an overview, a little bit of some of the history on these projects, the costs, and where they, where they stand right now. The Angle Side Booster Pump Station, this was a project identified in the 2010 Water System Plan, our comp plan that we received, Brennan Caldwell did that report, brought it to us in 2009, and it was adopted in 2010. It identified that the Angle Side tank had dead storage in it, and what that means is the water level that was being used in the tank, that really is a function of how much pressure we can get out of the tank based on its level, wasn't being utilized very much. The, the water filled up to an elevation of about 62 feet, and when it was drawn down, it would only be drawn down to about 57 feet. So we were just using the upper, small amount of the tank to provide for the, the upper zone there. And when the engineers looked at this during the comp plan analysis, they identified the number one project that we needed was to utilize more storage that currently exists in that tank. So instead of it starting at 62 feet and being drawn down to 57 feet, this particular design would allow the tank to actually be drawn down all the way to somewhere where there's about 20,000 gallons left in the tank, which is a near 500,000 gallon tank, so it, it, it really would capture an additional 260,000 gallons in that tank that we couldn't, we couldn't get to, the, the water pressures were too low. So this booster pump station, what it does is, once the level and the demand is called for in the system, it kicks on and maintains the pressure that you want it to set at, which is, I think, somewhere around 50 PSI thereabouts, and it would maintain that pressure all the way down and draw the tank down to, like I say, where it only has about 20,000 gallons left in it. A very good idea, fairly less expensive than some of the other designs. There were discussions, I believe, about a new tank at Angle Side, in fact, it ended up in the comp plan as well, but for later on years. This particular plan was to, to bring this on, so that was the decision back in 2010, and it was on our punch list to get that moving. So, we brought it forward to, to capture this 260,000 gallons. The design firm, we actually, two design firms, the first design firm on board was actually Brennan Caldwell as well, but when we got working through the system with them, it turned out that we had to, we couldn't meet agreement on the scope of work, and so they were let go, and we brought on MSA, Murray, Smith and Associates to finish the design. The current tank, will it accomplish what it's promised? Absolutely. If the, if the design is correct, the, the tank will indeed draw on that dead storage and give us more capacity, more storage, usable storage in that tank. If the design doesn't work, then we got problems, we gotta go back after the designer to make corrections happen that, so... When the tank was, or when the booster pump station was brought on, the timeline for that, I'll give you a little feel for that. The contract with MSA started in 2012, and we broke the contract into two pieces, a site work aspect and a, we actually... The pump station, instead of having it custom-built, we could actually, through vendors, we could get a off-the-shelf, so to speak, pump station that would, would facilitate this for far less money, so that was a choice that was made. So, we actually had two contracts running, one with EFI, which was for this off-the-shelf booster pump station, to, to build it to the specifications of the designer, and then there was the site work that was needed up there to where we were gonna install it, put in the pad, put in the building, and do the necessary piping. So, those two contracts moved forward, the advertisement went out for the pad and that in February of 15, and in March of 15, the construction for the pump station was awarded to Cayman, and the pump station was completed in August of this year, '16. And when the crews went up in 15 to evaluate the, the functionality of what was installed, they found operational problems when they tried to fill the tank, the, the system didn't allow it to, to act as it should've. And so we went back to MSA and said, "This thing's not working." And our city engineer, along with MSA, decided that there would be a water-operated valve, a gate valve that would be installed in the vault, and that should facilitate both filling, ease of filling, and, and the operation of the tank would be, would be doable. So, we have yet to test that, we actually had it set up for last week, and some samples, water samples were, didn't allow us to do the testing. EFI is coming back on the 13th of October, so next week, and they will be testing it, but because we've seen operational issues with this, we are having the designer, Marshall Meyer, from MSA, at this particular onsite testing, we're gonna have EFI, of course, they're the, the unit that we're actually testing. And then we're gonna have parametrics, the SCADA operating programming gentleman, Glenn, he will be there to, and along with our staff, be there to make sure that we get what we paid for, so to speak, out of the system, because it needs to work, it should work, and we want it to work, because it obviously is gonna provide us storage that will, otherwise won't be able to be captured. So, that's kind of where that project is at. The estimate to do the additional SCADA work is right around $40,000. This would be work we needed to do, but we wanted to do it independent of the contract, so to speak, with the consultant. So, we hired, well, we haven't hired him yet, but our plan would be to bring you programming to accomplish, to automate this system. If the testing fails, however, and we can't get it tested to, to work, then MSA is gonna have to go back to the drawing board and tell us how to, how to fix it. But, and quite concerned over the operational situation out there, and we just wanna make sure this thing is what we ordered, and so, stay tuned for that. Like I say, that is scheduled for October 13th, and our hope is certainly that we can get this thing to work with very little additional work. So, let's see here, I believe I covered everything on here. Oh, what, what happens, if the design works the way it should, it shouldn't take any more staff time to, you know, care and feed this, this pump station, it should pretty much function automatically and require very little staff support, obviously from time to time to do certain things to it. But if it doesn't function, it theoretically could be a significant amount of staff time needed to do certain things, to keep it moving and exercising it and other things, and we, of course, don't wanna go there if we don't have to. So, we will be looking very closely at what needs to happen to, to get this operational and exactly what we ordered. So, are there any questions regarding that particular project before I move on to Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone?
So, I'm, I'm a little confused, so is the issue with the design, or the issue is with the actual ready-made station that we ordered? Or do we know?
We believe in the design and how it was put together. There's a whole lot of very confusing details associated with how this need to work and what needs to turn on, when other things need to shut off. The problem really is, the problem is, when we go to fill the tank, currently, it, it gets filled through a 12-inch water main. And in going through the booster pump station, our new booster pump station up there, it connects it down into a 6-inch line, and it has several .5s and 90s and bends in the pipe that it makes its way through the booster pump station. And the head loss associated with that, and that's the amount of effort it takes to push water through the, through the system there, is causing our pumps down at the shop, our booster pumps down at the shop, to induce water hammer and other concerning things in the system. We have on that network quite a bit of fragile pipe, some of this pipe that is old and brittle, and, you know, you don't wanna induce a bunch of shock to that, because we're gonna end up with leaks. So, we need to get this to work right, and the intertie between how SCADA turns on and off, and how these pumps are cycled on and off, we're hoping that this thing will be adjustable to the point where that will all work smooth, it should, I mean, we, we ordered this thing and they designed it and it's done a little better work. So, that's kind of where we're at, so we test it, and the testing really of the booster pump station, this off-the-shelf unit, that really isn't the problem, but how that was, the design of that was incorporated into the full design of the booster pump station, and all the piping and needed, that's where we've got concern, and, and rightfully so. You know, the, the crews found, initially, you know, when hooking it up, they found problems, so we will be looking deep into those and putting responsibility where it lies, so.
Questions, more questions? So, I guess, I'm looking at this Angle Side Booster Pump experience, and I know we've been talking about it for like 10 years, and it kind of seems like there's a lot of different people involved, and a lot of parts, and it seems like in some things that we deal with, we do one part at a time, we check it out and the part's okay. In this, it kind of appears what we're looking at is, we plug in everybody's thing together, and we hope, when we turn on the valves, that it all kind of works. I mean, that's kind of just in two sentences, what, you're kind of, it might be some design, it might be this, it might be this, and there's a lot of people involved in this, so your idea this next week is to get them all in a room, and we turn a knob and we say, "We hope it works," kind of, and I'm not blaming you or our people, but it seems like all those things could've been checked out independently over the past six years. I don't know, I'm just kind of trying to see how this works, and I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody in this, because it's way beyond my mind to figure out how to make that work. But, you can't, you couldn't have checked out each, like, the design, or, or this part of it, or this, before we got it, got it all together, because then, that's just how it is, is that kind of...
It, it really kind of is, Mayor, the, the designer, that's their responsibility to evaluate the city's current system, what pumps we have, what pump curves there are, they need to analyze the tank, and what water levels need to be maintained, what pressures need to be maintained, but it was their job to take all that into consideration and then design a project for us that allows us to draw down and utilize this dead storage in the tank. And that was the scope of work we put together, it was the scope of work they agreed to, and it was their choice what booster pump station to buy off the shelf, I mean, they were 100% in tune with, with what they chose there. And so, we, you know, we certainly were involved in conversations with the designer all the way along, and, and things were discussed, but never did anybody say, you know, this is, this might not work, right? Every, every indication was it was gonna work turnkey perfect, and that's what we expected.
And it's still made, but it's still made, what's, what's the $40,000 in SCADA? Do we have to do that before we check this thing out?
No, no, we will wait until after, we make sure it's functional. But what that would do there is have the ability for the system to be integrated with SCADA, and then be automated through that system. So, the, the current system was designed with actually some radio frequencies that turn ons and offs and monitor the tank emission, the water in the tank, and it has pressure sensors down at the industry and other places, so... There's a, there's a lot of complicated things that need to be evaluated here, but our main concern is that we can fill the tank, and the tank, the booster pump station will maintain and sustain the pressure within the system while the tank is being filled, so that we don't end up with surges.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments concerning this?
Okay, I'll move on to number two, which is Upper Mountain View Tank and Pressure Zone. So the purpose of the construction of this particular project was, as you know, with the regional partners being Washington State Patrol and Department of Corrections and the City of Shelton, we went together in extending a water main out into the urban growth area, all the way out to kind of the west limits of Washington State Patrol to provide for water, not only for State Patrol and Corrections, which they were kind of the primary drivers, but also anybody along that line that wants to hook up. And there, as, as Tracy mentioned, there's several of these Class A water systems that potentially could hook up, along with the development of any parcels along this particular line. When we initially built the line, we were hoping that the water pressure that was gonna be introduced from up from Mountain View Zone would be able to pressurize this at a level that State Patrol could use it, because they wanted water right away. In fact, we had a, a commitment to them to bring them water, and I tried all day to find that date, and I, I can't find it. But I believe it was the end of, end of 2015, or the first part of this year, we told them we would have this system operational. So we're a little behind schedule, but stay tuned, because there's more information about State Patrol. The, so this particular zone up there, we wanted to get pressure to, to Washington State Patrol. When we hooked it up, and we physically hooked it up, we had to put what they call an RP device in, which is a backflow prevention device, and that robs about 10 to 15 pounds of pressure away from what is currently at their location. So, when we added that on there, and, and we have to have it, it did not have adequate pressure to serve the State Patrol. They had certain pieces of equipment and other things out there that wouldn't allow that low of a pressure to, to work it. So, we disassembled it, so to speak, the, the State Patrol went back on port water, and they've just been in a holding pattern to hook up to our system when, when it was complete. That was the main, you know, driving forward process to get this tank onboard, is we needed to increase the pressure out there in that Upper Mountain View Zone, and the only way to do that was to build a tank. And we needed storage anyway, that was an identified project in our comp plan, this same 2010 comp plan. And so this just facilitated us doing that, we reconditioned well three at the same time, and we, we built this new tank. And this was what we called Phase One of Upper Mountain View, it's the project we've been working on. And in fact, let me share the timelines with you on that. So, in 2010, of course, the comp plan was done, in '12, we set out an RFQ for Design Services, and we hired MSA to design Upper Mountain View's system. And in '13, we reported to the commission that Phase One was ready, and we'd continue with the design on, on Phase Two, which, of course, continued. In 2013, we had a technical memo that was given to us by, how do you pronounce this, Carlo? They're kind of another, we're in water modeling, and... Should underline this stuff so I could find it quicker. The city commission awarded a $3.4 million contract to Roglands in January of 15, so that's when construction began on the tank. And currently, that particular tank, we also awarded a million dollars contract to Cayman for the construction of, of the booster pump station and well three rehabilitation. So, those were both awarded in, in January of 15, and of course, all the Phase Two documents were submitted to us already, so we could go to construction, but of course, the commission is, you know, we, we talked at length about whether or not we should proceed with that and take out loan money to actually go out to bid with that, and so that's still on the shelf, and whenever we do find the time to do that, we certainly can. And then in '16, we had, again, parametrics, $26,000 to complete the SCADA work. So, this project's gone on from August 12, when we got the design started, until this year, when the tank is, is now basically complete. There's some final testing that needs to happen at, at well three and at the altitude valve up there to make sure that we can move water between Mountain View Zone and Upper Mountain View Zone, because without customers on this particular tank right now, we need to push... Because without customers on this particular tank right now, we need to push water in there with well three, but then we'll bleed it back through this altitude valve, and, and when there's a call for water in the Mountain View Zone, we will actually be taking it from Upper Mountain View to turn that water over, so it just doesn't sit there. And staff seems to think that is a doable thing, not a problem. It certainly is going to take a little bit of time to keep that thing tested and that. We, we also have had Tractor Supply approach us regarding development out at the intersection there. And they would like our water, and so we, we have a, an immediate need to also get them the water they need. So the current status, like I say, is we, we've now built this four hundred and forty thousand gallon tank. It's going to have storage for us, allow us to, allow development to happen for a short time. The Class A systems, when we contact them, they'll have the ability to hook up. But for right now, that particular project is, like I say, by the end of next week, we're hoping to have it completely operational. So it's, it's right there and ready to go. With regard to costs, both on these projects, the cost for the Angle Side Booster Pump Station life to date is 1.5 million. That's all inclusive of all costs, administrative, design, construction costs. And the E F I pump station portion of that, the off-the-shelf unit was right around four hundred thousand dollars. The, back to the Mountain View Pressure Zone, we, for Phase One, it's come in right at about 5.3 million. The new tank was 3.1, and the adjustments, the modifications to well three and the booster pump station up there was 8.63, or 863,000 of that total. And Phase Two, the design currently comes to about 566,000, and of course, we haven't gone to construction on that. That pretty much completes the kind of update for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clark?
Could you please? Whoa.
Mike, we've got God in the mic. Oh, there you go. Adds a little excitement to the show.
Will you please repeat the numbers for the Angle Side?
Sure. Find it again here. The Angle Side Booster Pump Station in total is 1.526,169, 1,526,169. And the indirect costs are 128. The construction costs for the onsite was 385. The E F I off-the-shelf pump station module was right around 400,000. And then we had design costs and other administrative-related costs of right around 474,000.
So the work that we approved for well one, for the rehab of that, is that part of any of these numbers, or that's a separate cost?
No, Commissioner Moore, that, those are independent of these. These are just the Angle Side and Mountain View Zone costs.
Okay.
The reconditioning of well one will be above and beyond that.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions?
And so I guess we would be wanting to be moving forward with negotiations with the State Patrol and saying that we have water for them right away.
Absolutely.
And there's a couple other properties in that area that need water that we probably could, probably go and approach them with, because we got water, we want to make sure we have a place for it to go.
Absolutely. In fact, Bob Towser, our consultant here, he has had communications with the State Patrol. There's a latecomers agreement that somehow did not get recorded, so that's also in motion to get that through Kathleen and get it all squared away and, and recorded. But the efforts to help them in any way we can get them to hook up to our system. Literally, when we disconnected them a year or two ago, when that disconnect happened, they're laying almost side by side. The, the amount of work that's needed to get them hooked up shouldn't be that bad, but they have indicated they've got, you know, some budgetary constraints that are going to delay them being able to move forward. But we're trying to work with them and encourage them and help them in any way we can.
All right. Other questions at this time? All right. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, I guess I'll turn this over to, again, our city administrator, Ryan Wheaton. Are there any final touches or administrative reports or anything like that?
No final touches.
All good? All right. Our next, we, I guess we're not going to take Columbus Day off, so our next meeting will be October 10th, next Monday at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.